Hello, everyone. Council President is testifying on a bill at the legislature right now. So he is hoping that Councilmember Kinnear, would you mind getting us started?
Okay, Hannah Lee, thank you. Can you tell, I don't have the, I don't have the agenda in front of me. Can you tell me what the first item is on it?
Sure, we're just starting with the water conservation update from Scott and Marlene.
Okay, perfect. And are we needing to record this?
I think we're all good to go on our end here on Channel 5 for streaming and everything, so.
I can barely hear you.
I think we're good to go.
Okay, thank you. So, Marlene and Scott, before you start, congratulations, I want to say it in public. And we're delighted, quite delighted, and look forward to a long and prosperous collaboration with you. So, take it away.
Thank you, Councilmember Kinnear, I appreciate that. I'm still not used to the idea that my cube mate here is going to go across the river, but we'll get, we'll get used to that over time, I suppose. We can, we can hit them up from Good Things from the County. So, today, we're gonna, we have a team out of Public Works to talk to you about, really going more with water stewardship. We think that's more inclusive of everything that we're going to be doing on, because it also includes operational changes that, that we have envisioned along those lines. So, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Let's see if it's gonna work. Otherwise Hannah Lee has it as well. So, this is a collaborative cross-division team, so you're gonna see a number of different presenters today. But water stewardship, water conservation has been a very important part of what we've been talking about here in Public Works and implementing. Certainly something that the council has also been very interested in, as well as the Sustainability Action Subcommittee and your new Water Resources Group. So, we're gonna bring you back to a graphic that we've been using for a while. The goal of this is just to show that the city really is going to be leading some of these efforts and being an example for our community. So, we're not gonna ask our community to do anything that we're not willing to do ourselves. And really, we see that to be successful in this effort, we're gonna need everyone to help us along the way. So, clearly Parks is an important part of this, our community members, and even beyond to our regional partners. So, we believe all working together with the city's setting tone and example, we really can achieve a lot. And we're gonna need help from you and from Park Board and other policy-setting groups to be able to achieve our goals. So, that just kinda gives us sort of the global look of the importance of this strategic initiative. And then Steve Burns, our Water Director, is gonna take the next slide.
Yeah, hi, Council. Very, very happy about who my new boss is going to be in the next few weeks. And, but still sad to see Scott go, because of all the leadership that he provided over, over the years that he's been here. You know, we're talking about the title of the program, the stewardship, that kinda speaks to what Marlene was just saying, and that the city is willing to jump in and do whatever it takes as well. And we're, we are not going to, you know, force our customers to do anything that we're, that we're not willing to do ourselves. And that's, I think, really important to include into each side of the equation. You have the supply, and you have the system, and we have the demand on the system. And I think that the stewardship title of that actually combines these, those concepts together. And so, when we're designing our system, and in fact, I just got out of a meeting with Avista, this affects Avista as well, on their, the load on their grid, as we use pumps, turning them on and off, and the kind of peaks and spikes that they see on their system. We have a similar condition that is happening to our water system. And the way in which that we need to design it, the way that we need to manage the water quality, and as well as the distribution quality, the pipes themselves and the equipment themselves, the efficiency of it. And so, that system side of the equation is something that we have the control over in operations and maintenance. Of course, that's what I'm most focused on. And so, extremely important piece of it. And that stewardship, with our conservation plan, this speaks directly to our responsibility for our natural resource, as well as the public health. And, and I think that our program that we're continuing to build and put together and maintain, it really speaks to how seriously we take that responsibility. If we go to the next slide. This graph is, is actually, I think, it's a simple graph to show you the continuing trend of the decrease in consumption in our residential services. Residential services are the majority of water services demand in the city of Spokane. And so, that's why it's shown on this plot. So, even though the number of service connections that we continue to add to the system, the, that's the blue line that you see kind of growing each year as the population grows over time. This yellow line is a, showing a trend of decreased overall consumption. And that yellow line is actually normalized or actually corrected for cooling degree days. And that's to remove kind of the erratic nature of our temperatures, you know, the seasonal fluctuations in our temperature. And then the, you know, every three years, having those extreme years that we have. By dividing out by cooling degree days, that normalizes it, so we can actually see that this is a trend, and it isn't a cooler summer, or a warmer winter, or, you know, those types of differences. That's what's kind of taken out of that, and we can actually see that the trend is continuing. How do we continue that trend? You know, that is the goal. We are, we're continuing to try and to move that needle with, with our conservation program, which the city takes full ownership of and participation in with our own consumption practices and our design practices. And, and so, we want to see that line continue to, in that trend, obviously. And I believe that you're coming back, Marlene, to talk about this one?
Sure. So, you know, we focus a lot on where our opportunities are. And, you know, so Steve's your geograph, you know, where we've looked at residential usage, particularly in the summertime. And that residential class does make up nearly forty percent of our annual water use. And then commercial up here in the, in the purple is another seventeen percent. So, obviously, those are big opportunities for us. We're gonna talk a little bit today also about this one, distribution system loss. And in parks up here, they only represent three percent of annual usage, but they are a great way for us to set examples for our community and provide more affordability for the park system, to be able to manage their irrigation better. Obviously, we've had a lot of successes that you're aware of in terms of upgrading irrigation systems in city parks, and we're gonna continue to use them as an example for us. And then I'm gonna go to Catherine Miller.
So, the water conservation really has a huge impact, obviously, on ICM, on future capital, especially when we talk about that long-term need to reduce that capital for our growth and capacity that we can then allocate to the places. And you heard me talk about that with our water system plan update, where Department of Health is not, you know, wanting us to count our chickens before they hatch, in the sense that we can't use future reductions, we have to show actual reductions before we can reduce those costs. There's just a lot of tie-ins back into the work we're doing in ICM. Of course, the focus and the work and the desire is to accommodate that growth without that need to increase pumping. That's gonna be a big focus as we move forward into that long-term conversation. At the same time, our current goal and focus in implementing and building on that water conservation plan, and doing and revise the tiers that we're looking at right now for both the residential and commercial. So, kind of those big, overall arching kind of look at what we're doing and why we're doing it. The next slide, I think, while we've seen this several times in other presentations, it's a pretty powerful slide when you really kind of look at it from, from the perspective of, we're trying to attack both issues, your indoor water use issues, as well as the peaking. And when we talk about that indoor water use, that's where we can shave that base and have that impact to then, again, reflect that back into utilizing that same water for economic growth, without, again, that additional production is certainly the goal and the focus. We've been doing that for a while in terms of the good programs we've had in the past, but really, again, bringing it to that next generation. And then, again, looking at the other side of the equation, achieving that reduction in seasonal peak demands, really getting that outdoor use, shaving that peak. So, I think this is a pretty powerful slide to really communicate what we're trying to do holistically through the program. Next slide. So, really, today's conversation that we want to share is the strategies. You're gonna hear about the education incentives that we're continuing to do around the topic. Our financial approach, again, really looking at that rate change that we're looking at, sharing out the policy changes we're wanting to move forward, continuing the collaboration, of course, as Marlene mentioned before on Parks. And then really taking a look at that management of our distribution system as we go through. Now, the rest of the year, you're gonna see that as amplifiers. You're already gonna be, we're, as a community here, we're already gonna be benefiting pretty soon with that utility upgrade that's gonna come online pretty soon. You've heard ICM talk a whole lot about MODA, while we're talking about looking at that next twenty years facility planning. You're gonna hear about that the rest of the year, and actually into the next couple of years. And then our last amplifier, really looking at that smart metering. We're gonna have more conversations throughout the year focused on that as well.
And then Kristen Zimmer's gonna go next.
Hi there. So, just update you on our education and incentives. We had a great year in 2020 with Spokane Scape. It's still going strong. More customers are doing it every year. New to 2021, we have an exciting partnership with the Lands Council and Urban Forestry's new program, Spokane Ape. And that program aims to increase the urban tree canopy by planting trees in neighborhoods that are really lacking. So, our collaboration with them is we're gonna extend the street tree to include two to three drought-tolerant plants, and then create a official Spokane Scape in the right of way. So, the way the customers are gonna have volunteers do all of that labor for them, and there'll be some education, and a little utility credit as well. So, excited to see how that goes. Let's see, we opened up our new rebate program that started in August, and I'll talk about that more in the next slide. We've continued our engaging the community in our educational media campaign with video posts, social media posts, contests, and online workshops as well. New in 2021, another exciting thing, we're gonna be offering water efficiency audits to our top commercial and residential users, as well as some city-owned facilities. So, that service will include an onsite visit to identify efficiency opportunities inside and outside the facility. So, that means everything from your irrigation system to bathroom faucet. And, yeah, very, very excited about that. Next is, a new, new tool is available, Water Use Calculator, which is really nice for customers, really simple to use. They enter their account information, and they can see an estimated change in their bill, their utility bill with our new water rates. All right, next slide. So, just to recap on the new Waterwise rebate program, let's see, we added, so in addition to our Spokane Scape rebate, we added high-efficiency toilets, smart irrigation controllers, high-efficiency nozzles, and a few other things that weren't really utilized. So, I'm just reporting on the, the big items. So, in five months, we issued 286 toilet rebates, 116 smart irrigation controllers, sixty-one Spokane Scape credits, and 160 high-efficiency springboard nozzles. So, that all totaled in $65,645 in customer credits and a projected annual savings of 5.1 million gallons of water. And so, that's just running five months out of the year. I expect to see a lot, I'm hoping to see a lot more rebates processed this year, especially in our commercial sectors. And one other thing we're working on as well is building a dashboard to actually directly measure the water consumption and, and really be able to measure the program effectiveness, and if these rebates are really, if they're working as planned. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Kristen. So, we did a lot of work with council last fall around rates. And one of the changes approved by council and suggested by us was a change in the residential water use tiers, the consumption tiers. So, I just wanted to remind everyone of what we did. So, remember, our median usage for residential customers in the summer was about twenty-three units a month, and their year-round median usage is much lower, at eight, eight units a month. So, our goal here was to incentivize customers to stay at twenty-five units or less of usage per month and maintain the affordability of the lifeline needs, making sure that those lower amounts were affordable for our customers. So, you can see what we did was we put a couple extra units in the second tier, making that, those lifeline uses a little more affordable. And you can see, we split the third tier, so that if you started using more than that twenty-six units a month, you're gonna pay a little more for that. So, our goal here is to have the higher users pay for that and think about how they might save money on their bill by using less water. So, so that goes into place, is in place now, but, you know, our customers really aren't seeing the effect of this. They will come summer, and we have that water use calculator that they can use to estimate how much their bills might change over the summer. You know, it's, this is an incremental change, and we might look at doing more with this in the future, but this is a good first step. We did not change the commercial water consumption tier strategy for, as part of that, we wanted to, but it required a little more effort. The commercial customer class includes a variety of different components, everything from parks to multifamily. So, we're taking a deeper dive into this section of our customer base. But really, what we're seeing, as we saw in residential use, is that a very small percentage of customers truly does drive water demand. You can see for that peaking, as Catherine talked about, to shave the peak, our example from August 2019 shows that about three and a half percent of our commercial customers use nearly half of the water of that entire class. So, that is kind of the goal. How do we sort of address those super-users? And you can see in the wintertime, so this would be base use, less than one percent of our commercial customers use nearly forty percent of the water. So, as we look at structuring water consumption tiers for commercial customers, these are things that we're keeping in mind and evaluating. And we're gonna bring a recommendation to revise these tiers back to you later this year. And that kind of dovetails into policy changes. So, we would like to suggest council a resolution to encourage every other day watering. At this point, we would, we see it as a recommendation coming from the city, rather than something that, you know, we wouldn't have water police at this point. But we would like to encourage that. I mean, it's really much healthier for your landscaping. And even as we dealt with the trees in windstorm, you know, if we took the advice of people like Angel Spell, we would be watering deeper and less often to encourage root growth down, so that they could be more resilient when we had things like a windstorm. So, we really would like to be that example for the community, like with the bullseye that we shot at the beginning. And Parks has agreed to be an example. You know, maybe that a large park would have to have half of it watered on one day and half of it watered on another, but they're very willing to give it a try on the every-other-day watering. So, we're gonna work with them on how to do some example-type education out to the community. We're also working with Parks on irrigation and landscape standards for city operations. And long-term, we'd like to develop irrigation standards for new developments that could be built into our development process. We did some of this with little impact development around stormwater management, and we think that irrigation standards would be the next logical step there. And of course, we expect recommendations to come from the council's Water Resources Collaborative Group on policy changes as well. So, we certainly want to hear from them. And finally, for the budget next year, we're hoping to move beyond the initiative to a more formal water stewardship program. So, watch for that as we develop the budget for 2022. Our collaboration with Parks is huge. We are doing the last of our projects under our previous collaboration, and that will be the Manitowoc Park Japanese Garden Koi Pond. This is about a $250,000 project, and it will save 16 million gallons of water a year, which is the same amount of savings approximately that we got from the upgrade of the irrigation system at Indian Canyon Golf Course. So, this is a significant water savings, plus it will improve the pond's health and the koi fish's health. So, we're excited to partner on that. And we're working to create a renewed water-saving investment plan with Parks. We added those capital, water-only capital charges as part of our rate setting in the fall. So, we're gonna work with Garrett and his team to use some of the capital dollars that Parks will invest to put back into their irrigation system upgrades and keep their costs low for the park system. And then Lauren Stroll is gonna take this one.
We do need to include a distribution system management within our, our plan. We made some changes last year on our hydrant use program. In the past, where our hydrants were completely open for use by contractors, homeowners, quite a few entities that would come in and use those. We have, we did implement our hydrant permit program and metered system last year. The biggest base of that is protection of the water system. Based off of our experience in the contamination in the Hilliard area, we're trying to protect the quality of the water that we feed to the customers. Additionally, we had a large amount of loss from the hydrants during that, that one instance, a very large instance. We did flush 10 million gallons out to the ground in order to get the contamination back out, trying to reduce the amount of loss through that. And also trying to get the, the customers that are using those hydrants to think more about using the water for what it needs to be used for, and not just letting it run and understanding, knowing that they don't have to pay for the water that's used. They just let, leave them on quite a bit. This year, we have installed a water filling station, which will become active and available to the customers. to the customers this spring. Out on the West Plains, we converted one of our old booster stations into a bulk distribution system. And customers that have it dried up well, don't have as much supply as they, as they need to have to keep their household running, have the ability to take a containers out there, fill it from the bulk filling station. Contractors that need dust control or washing parking lots and that also have, will have the ability to go to that station, fill up their tank, and use the water where they need to use it. We also are working on our leak management. When, when you, in the past, we've looked at replacing the older pipe. The oldest pipes should go first. And that method doesn't always work for us. A lot of times, you dig it up and it is leaking like a sieve and you, it was a good investment. But we also find that the older stuff was actually better cast, has thicker wall stuff, and may have been in good shape. So we brought in a couple of companies that did some leak investigations, one of them being a satellite imagery. They had the ability to analyze water in, underground, the depth of the water and the makeup of existence of chlorine in that water. Say it's at six feet, that's probably a water main that's leaking. On top of that, we brought in another company that did a analysis of types of pipe used across the country, the rates of breaks on those pipes, the rates that we have seen those pipes breaking in our system, types of soil, all kinds of different points that they analyzed with it, and give us a likelihood of breakage on, on pipes. So this slide actually overlays two different types of analysis. And now you can actually look into it at different areas that are prone to breakage and other ones that are very highly probable of breaking. Gives us a better area to invest our funds in trying to replace that pipe and actually get the value out of what we're putting into the system. Next slide. Both of those system management tools lead to our distribution system leakage. Much earlier in this presentation, Marlene's slide showed that in 2018, we were at 11 and a half percent DSL rate. The state does have a minimum of, I'm sorry, a maximum 10% standard. We wish to get underneath of that. It is a floating number. You get bad year, bad, a couple of bad breaks and it'll push your numbers up, as well as trying to pinpoint down the accuracy of that number. Once we know the exact amount of water that's used out of a hydrant, it gives you a better understanding of what that distribution system leakage really was. We have a goal to meet that maximum of 10% and continue to invest in areas that, that better our DSL number, either on leakage or metering accuracies and all that. Within our master plan, our master goals is a, this is a long-term plan. We know that we won't reach all of these goals overnight, but by 2030, we do plan to have a 5% reduction per capita of consumption. We hope to reach 500 million gallons saved by all the participants with a 15% peak demand reduction. That peak demand is, is actually quite important in, in the system design and the capital investments and how many new tanks we need to have and booster stations in order to simply meet that summertime peak. In order to reach that, we know we need to reach an annual goal of 1,400 rebates issued, 10 million gallons saved by participants, 2 million gallons saved by city-owned properties. We plan to reach all that through having, meeting at least 30 education events and an overall reduction within our growing season. All those combined and building on each other each year should reach our goal by 2030.
So I think that's, that's it for our formal presentation. If council has any questions, we're happy to entertain those. Thank you. That was informative. Council, Michael Cathcart, Councilmember Cathcart, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of comments on the, the policy recommendations. I, I would love to see maybe some, some thought put into creating some incentives for folks to reduce rather than mandates, you know, talking about the every other. I know we're not going to enforce that now or, or near term, but looking at ways they could save on their water bill if they've reduced a certain percentage, you know, based on last year, that sort of thing. I think that would be really helpful. And then in terms of the irrigation, I, I'm not too familiar with the cost of irrigation systems and how much that might add to a project, but, but again, I think finding some kind of an incentive, if they use some higher efficient irrigation system, they can get a discount or the, you know, some, something like that. I, I just think looking at an incentive-based rather than a mandate-based model is going to be much better for, for our constituents.
So I want to add to that. I think there's a, and Marlene, correct me if I'm wrong, Kristin talked about a rebate program for individuals. Would that not be what Councilmember Cathcart is referring to?
So we do have the rebates for certain kinds of equipment that you would add, so smart controllers, toilets, high efficiency nozzles in your irrigation system. So those are certainly a good first step. We, we did do the low-impact development rules for new development, though we did, we did encourage some usage by reducing perhaps the cost of their stormwater bill. So there might be an opportunity for us to take a look at that when we do irrigation standards for developers. I'm not sure on, on the customers, the individual customers. Right now, we are looking at, you know, encouraging them by saving money on their bill by using less water. So our tiers are sort of structured that way. If you use less water, you pay less.
Thank you. Who else? Councilmember Stratton.
First, I apologize for being late. Marlene, and I don't know, I don't have an update on this issue, so I'm just going to throw it out there. I remember northeast Spokane, that old, old library in Hilliard that has turned into a bar that was transferred to a bar. There were issues there that that had not been changed. They still have septic, if I'm correct. I don't know if that's been corrected or not, but I guess my question is, if in a situation like that, and that hasn't been corrected, so they're still on septic, then what does that do to their water bills and their water, if they get any kind, you know what I'm saying?
Sure. Yeah, it doesn't really affect the water. Yeah, it is really much more of a sewer issue. And as we work to develop our utility replacement loan program, we think customers like that might be able to take advantage of that. I mean, we're, we're really aiming that toward low-income residential customers to, because we do have some existing septic and we do have some other things that, that need to be replaced and get hooked up to sewer. So that will be kind of our opportunity to sort of work on those. It, it doesn't currently change their water bill or water use, however.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it didn't and just to plant that in, in you and I, I think remember this, when they redid Monroe, I'm not sure what the reason was that they didn't go ahead and tackle that sewer issue at that time, not Monroe, I'm sorry.
Marquette.
Not sure why that wasn't corrected at that point. I know it's been going on a long time. Councilmember Fagan and I tried to work on it, but I just thought I would throw that out there to see, just to kind of put that in your brain, if that's something we're probably going to have to look at.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilkerson, did you want to chime in?
Thank you. And I was thinking along with the sewer type replacement, if we incentivize people who do have old spring water systems, that would be neat, that's probably using more water than it should, just another opportunity to upgrade and, and save water and benefit the citizens. But, but because we're partnering, if they don't have to... That was my dance tune, that they don't have to carry the whole burden of, when they try to upgrade and save water too. So I think if we're going to find resources for sewer, we should look at maybe finding some resources like that for water.
Yeah, and amongst Kristin's current rebates are smart controllers and high efficiency nozzles. So to replace the, the nozzles that are in your irrigation system and, and the controller, which often those are the, the pieces that can be upgraded easily for people if they have an older system.
Super. Anybody else? Okay, Marlene, thank you so much. Scott, thank you. Lauren, grateful. Stephen, wonderful. And we look forward to working with you on this because I know it's important for a lot of us to, our river is a very precious resource, so we want to make sure we protect it and our aquifer. So appreciate the time taken today. Thank you. Next up is parking meter and kiosk replacement. We have 20 minutes for that. So Chris Becker, are you going to be doing that?
Good morning. I have Julie Dixon here. I'm trying to turn on my video. I have Julie Dixon here this morning with Dixon.
Councilmember Kinnear. Sorry.
I'm sorry, what?
Sorry, can we take the legislative, state legislative agenda item first before we get to you, Chris? Because Brian really wants to be here for your presentation, Chris.
Okay, sure, sure.
If we could do that, that would be awesome. Thanks, sorry.
That, that's great. So we have, I don't know who's presenting, we have 10 minutes allocated for that. Not sure who's going to be doing that. Eric, are you going to be doing that?
You know, I think I'm going to pass the baton on this one. The first issue, Senate Bill 5235, which involves accessory dwelling units to, I see Melissa on the call, she's been tracking this. These are basically two issues that our legislative team wishes to put on our support list, testify in favor of, weigh in on, but, you know, they wanted to get a gut check from council about any concerns you might have. So Melissa, do you want to tackle 5235 and then we'll move to the next bill? Thank you.
Yeah, so 5235, it has passed the Senate, but what it does is it prohibits cities that are planning under the Growth Management Act to, to do, from doing two things. One is an owner occupied requirement around ADUs, and the second is prohibiting local governments from limiting the number of unrelated persons living in a home. So the thought is, is that the ADU requirement for the owner occupancy, if someone, if a renter was living in the primary unit, another renter could not be living in the ADU at the same time. So expanding the eligibility for that. And the second about the unrelated people is the idea that, you know, non-traditional families or, you know, roommate situations, if people have a large house to live in, that the room should be able to be utilized and shared as kind of what works for, you know, households in the community. With really kind of the goal of, you know, if there's empty bedrooms, people should be able to live in them safely and use them, especially in a housing crisis. So those are the two big issues for 5235. And on the ADU side, I think we've been having some conversations with Councilmember Cathcart and Councilmember Wilkerson and Councilmember Stratton about the ADU owner occupancy requirement. And I think Councilmember Cathcart can speak to some of the conversations he's had with some finance partners and stuff about how that occupancy requirement could impact ADU building in Spokane.
Take it away, Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you, Melissa. Yeah, I, so yeah, I think the ADU topic is, is a good one and, and it's definitely an important tool that will help us to expand housing in our community. And yeah, as part of our work that we've been doing on the ADU proposal, I, I had an opportunity to have a conversation with one of the local financial institutions just to see if they currently have any products specifically for constructing ADUs or if it's something that perhaps they, they could put together and offer. And really the feedback I got was if, if we are able to enact a policy that allows for, generally speaking, for ADUs to be built and, and utilized throughout the community, and one of the, the points was reducing that, that owner occupied rule or eliminating that owner occupied rule would make this just a little bit more palatable for them to, to want to create a product to support. I think there's a lot more conversations that we're going to have to have on the finance side, but, but really they need to see some sort of a policy that's a little bit broader than, than what's allowed now in order for them to feel comfortable providing some sort of a, a loan product for that to happen. So that was, that was their feedback. Obviously, there's other financial institutions, they may have some different perspectives, but this is one of the larger institutions in Spokane, pretty, pretty locally focused as well. But, so anyway, I, I just think supporting this is, is a pretty, it's a pretty simple bill. It's, it's not, I don't think that controversial. I mean, it limits it to five, except for nonprofits. So really, it just creates a, a really good opportunity to increase the, the housing stock in our community and, and kind of still enables us to, to do some other things with ADUs as well from a local perspective.
Great, thank you. Melissa, did you want to add anything?
No, I don't have anything to add, but if there is, you know, any questions or if any other council members wanted to weigh in, we just wanted to make sure there was some time for, for questions or discussion. Right, Eric?
Anybody want to ask a question about this? All right. Eric, you want to continue?
Yeah, so that bill passed the House 43 to 6. I don't think there's a lot of controversy there, but again, you know, just looking for a show of hands that you're comfortable adding this to our list of support issues. Great. And actually, Councilwoman Kinnear, I'm, I'm hoping we can defer on our discussion of House Bill 1076. It involves whistleblower protections for violations of workplace protections, and this is an issue that Council President is very passionate and knowledgeable about, and I think wanted to provide some, some background and education to the council. So if we could defer until he's back on the call, I, I think he can handle it better than me, especially since a lot of the bill language involves Latin terms that I'm not familiar with. And I'm afraid I, I might not even be able to pronounce them correctly, which would be embarrassing.
I thought you were bilingual, so...
I speak a little Danish, that's about it.
Okay. Well, then we will...
Well, thank you.
And Hannah Lee, I don't see Council President on, should I, I think we should probably go to the code enforcement cleanup if he wants to be part of that parking meter.
Yeah, whichever, whichever one is okay. We was hoping he'd be done by now and it's apparently taking a little bit longer to get him on for testimony, so that's okay. Just keep, keep moving through.
Chris, do you want to do first?
We'll start with parking.
Okay.
I think, yep, we have Julie Dixon of Dixon Resources Unlimited with us here this morning, and she is going to provide some information and the recommendations for the implementation of our paid parking hardware. You'll remember that we went through the RFP process last year and we selected two vendors. We have McKay for our single and our dual space parking meters, and we have Flowbird for parking state, or for pay stations, I'm sorry. So Julie has a presentation she's going to go through. After she's done, I'd like to reserve a little bit of time at the end to revisit the SIP loan and talk about the conversations that we had with the Parking Advisory Committee a couple of weeks ago. So please take it away.
Before you start, we have 20 minutes allocated for this, so met out your time so we can have questions at the end.
Sorry. Sorry, little technical unmuting difficulty there. I apologize. Uh, thank you again for having us today. Very brief presentation on the paid parking equipment. And, um... Sorry, now look at the slides. Hopefully, there we go. Okay, now we're on. Uh, so parking pay stations, as Chris mentioned, we did go through a competitive selection process. And what you see there on the right side is what the parking kiosk basically will look like. What's really neat is the team is actually already exploring some wrapping opportunities, some different branding opportunities. It's a really great way to really message the information, to get it out there. Uh, when we do talk about parking pay stations, I think it's important when we talk about, it's really a unification of the parking experience. Uh, right now, mobile payment is so popular in Spokane. And that when you use a kiosk, you're actually paying by your license plate, very similar to the mobile payment process. And what'll happen is that the kiosks will be strategically placed and tied in with a mobile payment program so that those that want to participate with the mobile payment, they can. The signage will indicate that. As well as if you want to go to a kiosk and have that exchange, you can leverage that infrastructure. And so really, again, supporting the opportunity of transitioning the city to more of a plate-based system that will tie in, as we talked about, future permit programs and things like that that again can be managed efficiently and effectively by staff utilizing license plate recognition technology, or also what's known as LPR. Uh, the nice feature about this too is it really turns into some real optimization features for the city. Less collections, less maintenance opportunities. But again, really promotes the utilization of mobile, which is something in this COVID era is something that's been really important when we talk about contactless experiences for the customer. A couple of things when we talk about considerations. Uh, signage will become a factor, but this is an opportunity to really go out and really optimize sign placement and also look at opportunities that potentially bring some unification to some of our signage or potentially even remove some of our signage. Um, so some of the negatives that maybe folks will consider is the walking distance. Typically, the pay stations will be located at the end of a block or at a mid-block location, depending on how large the street or the roadway is. But again, that promotion of being able to utilize mobile or also utilizing the kiosk is something that we think will be a real positive for the community as a whole. What you see here on the right side is what is known as a single and/or dual space meter. And this is something that, I'm gonna show you a map in a moment that will highlight the locations of where we're recommending putting the different equipments, especially for the placement of the infrastructure. Rather than having a plethora of single space meters, the opportunity to leverage one unit that can manage two parking spaces is something that I think you'll see, especially in the downtown area when you see the signage. And what's really neat about this particular infrastructure is that if somebody does pay by their mobile payment, the light on the meter actually will reflect that. So the parking enforcement officers can really leverage visual indication to confirm the meter status. And this is going to be really helpful too when we talk about our foot beat, especially down in the more congested downtown area. And it really just, again, really unifies that dense area for the ease of customer access. Some of the considerations is that when we do talk about the single slash dual space meter configuration, there is more infrastructure, but it definitely leads to an easier customer experience in some cases. You can still pay by mobile. But again, the meter is right there, really next to where the vehicle is parked. Uh, but this will require additional maintenance as well as ongoing revenue collections. Um, it just increases it consistent with kind of what the city is doing now, and it is based on the parking space. So what you see on the left side here is just a rough layout of where we would anticipate, um, the different types of equipment would be located. And you really can see in that downtown core is where we anticipate maximizing the single and dual space parking meters and then really in the perimeter locations to leverage those pay stations. I do wanna highlight that especially as a result of COVID, many municipalities are shifting to more pay station-based systems. Though regardless of a pay station or a single space meter, the license plate recognition technology will be used all throughout the parking areas because we will be managing as well the time limits as we support these particular locations. And again, when we do talk about this, it's really focused on the customer experience. We wanna make sure parking is easy and understandable, easy to use and accessible. So that's something that's really key when we talk about the layout of how we propose the equipment. You've heard me mention license plate recognition or LPR technology a couple of times. We're very excited to increase this deployment. Um, you know, the city has dipped their toes in this previously, and now with our new vendor coming onboard, this is something that we're really excited about the integrations because the LPR units will be used to patrol all areas for parking management. And it's something that we're gonna be able to use to manage the time limit zones over stays and any opportunity to really leverage, again, even vehicle parking for, you know, over a designated timeframe. But the thing that I think is one of the neatest factors is how the vehicle units tie in with our foot beat patrol officers is that the LPR can actually transmit information to the foot beat officers so that we can be very efficient in the field and have a roving vehicle while the foot beat officers can respond to any notifications that come out of the LPR unit. But also very important, because we talk about data-driven decisions, is that the LPR is also going to be able to provide occupancy data so that as we come forward with future recommendations, policy changes, potentially rate increases, we're going to be able to tell you by the block face what the occupancy numbers are utilizing the LPR technology. And with that, I will turn the floor back over to Chris and see if there are any questions.
Questions from council? Can't see all of you. Okay, that, you packed a lot of information in a short amount of time, so congratulations on that. And Chris, do you wanna go ahead and finish up?
Sure. So Tanya Wallace and Michelle Hughes and Kim Orlov were all able to attend the last Parking Advisory Committee meeting with us. Um, that was, I think, the day after we had a conversation at Finance Committee about the SIP loan. Um, and Kim provided a very thorough financial analysis for the proposed SIP loan. Um, as a reminder, we're looking at drawing $1.2 million each year for the next three years, and that will support the replacement of our paid parking hardware, our new citation management software, and the license plate recognition technology. And then there would be another draw in 2025 of $2.6 million. And that will be to cover a balloon payment that is due in 2025 for the debt service for the River Park Square bonds. Um, and so just as a reminder, the bonds, those bonds were refinanced in 2016 to support the implementation of the city's strategic plan. And those, the savings from that refinance was reinvested back in the city. So under the new proposal, the repayment period for the SIP is five years. So the last payment would be due in 2030. And I can forward that spreadsheet that Kim put together. It's really, it's, um, it makes it very clear what those payments will be and what we're trying to do here, if you haven't already seen that.
Questions? No questions. But can you talk to us a little bit about the balloon payment? Was there a way, as I recall that, there was a way that we didn't have to do that? Or am I...
I wish I knew the background on that. Um, I was not in charge of parking at the time that that was done, and I don't have all of the background on that. But I can ask Tanya or Michelle Hughes. I think Michelle Hughes had some involvement, and they can provide you maybe just a summary on that refi.
That would help. My clock's blowing off. I apologize. Um, okay. So any questions, council? Got it? All right. Do you wanna just move on and go to your next?
Sure thing. So I have Luis Garcia and Jason Ruffing here today, and they're going to present on the information that I emailed to you very, very late last night. Um, and what we're going to do is give you an overview of the code enforcement operations in support of the encampment pod, downtown cleanup, and solid waste abatement from illegal dumping. Um, several of you have forwarded emails to us that you've received from community members, and there's a lot of questions about code enforcement operations. Um, some of those emails contained specific instances, and we're not prepared today to discuss any specific instances. Um, we're really just here to provide an overview for you. Um, also, I wanted to point out that this is a very complex issue, and it involves response from multiple departments. Um, so we're able to speak on behalf of code enforcement. We're not able to speak on behalf of other departments, and we can't speak to the legal advice that has been provided to us by our legal department. So I know there's questions that were asked in some of those emails, and you may have questions today that we're not able to answer for you. But I am gonna take notes, and I'm gonna write down all of the questions that you have today, and I will commit to you that I will track down those answers for you and get them back to you after this meeting. So, um...
Chris, before you go on, Council President sent you quite a little list.
He did.
Can you address as many of those as possible?
Yep. So I did forward that to Luis and Jason this morning as soon as I got it. And I know Luis was texting me all morning. Um, we, many of, we have answers to many of those questions already incorporated into the presentation that we sent last night. And so Jason will, or Luis and Jason will speak to as many of those as we can, and we will follow up afterwards. Um, so I do wanna say, um, I think we're gonna answer a lot of the questions through the presentation, and I think it might be easier if we hold questions until the end because I think we'll get to some of those as they go through the presentation. So I'm gonna turn it over to Jason and Luis.
Uh, thank you, members of councils. Luis Garcia, um, she, uh, Chris basically stole my intro. So, uh, so yes, we will try to drop a little bit of those answers from the questions that were sent over throughout the presentation. So all the other ones that are outstanding, we'll be sure to circle back around. But I'll kind of interject. Jason has the general presentation, but I'll interject to address some of those questions that were asked of staff. All right. So Jason, if you wanna go ahead and share your screen.
Yes, thank you, council members. Let me find the application to make sure this works. Can you see my screen, everybody? Great.
Yeah.
So as Chris mentioned, this is, um, this is a presentation about our cleanup policy. We spent, geez, the better part of a year developing this with internal partners in the city legal department. And as Chris mentioned, this is a policy specific to code enforcement and to cleanup efforts. This isn't a policy that details actions for SPD. It doesn't detail outreach actions or policies for outreach partners. We continue to notify outreach partners of reports of camps daily. Uh, we continue to work with them as much as possible. Uh, on these sites, just to make sure that we're all communicating about locations where they're working with citizens and that they're aware of locations that we visited as well. So again, this will be specific to code enforcement and the intent of that policy that we spent that time on. It really is impact mitigation. These locations have a lot of conditions that are present that are very concerning. There's a lot of times solid waste present, there's food waste, there's deteriorating items that can present health and safety hazards. There's human waste, there's needles and sharps, all sorts of things that pose potential risks. And so our primary purpose is to do our best to mitigate those impacts and also, very importantly, while respecting those rights of the people that are there and also passersby, neighbors, businesses, residents of the general area. So again, the purpose is to focus on the public health and safety of those locations while trying to weigh the balances of everyone that's involved in these types of complex situations.
Yep. And I would just like to add that downtown litter control has been an ongoing effort for years. Um, it's really a partnership that we utilize, guy, correctional facilities, their work crew. We also partner with the Downtown Spokane Partnership Clean Team. Um, so I've heard different terminologies being used. Um, but really, the litter control in our most dense area has been an ongoing program, and that has not changed. And litter control is not limited to any persons that are camping.
When we're talking about these types of reports and locations that this policy really directly applies to, it really breaks down into two different situations. We have most commonly abandoned sites and then occupied sites. We can also say active sites instead of occupied sites because at times, at an active site, the person isn't present. Uh, we would call that vacant. We need to get lost in the weeds of all the different potential terms. Uh, but we could say, most commonly, we deal with abandoned sites and we deal with active sites or occupied sites. When we're talking about an abandoned site, that's the photo on the left. The term that I most commonly think of in my head is items that indicate current habitation. And so that's really where we would differentiate just litter on the ground from a potentially active site. Uh, and so you can see on the picture on the left, there aren't really any items that indicate current habitation. Those potential things would be erected tents, other types of structures. Would be potential belongings, and most importantly, it would be people being present. If there's a site where there's just items scattered, you know, it's not apparent that this would be an occupied site. But then the photo on the right, it is quite apparent that that's an occupied site. We have a person present, we have multiple structures that are in place. And we'll talk more about the response to occupied sites here in a little bit. But the response to abandoned sites really is a priority, especially right now with limitations to the program, both from staffing and enforcement issues. You know, there are limitations to what we can do, and a primary part of our response right now are those abandoned sites for environmental concerns, but also for concerns related to attractive nuisances, which is a term that we talk about in code enforcement quite a bit, related to private property. Uh, you know, an open and unsecured structure would be an attractive nuisance, something that invites potentially dangerous activity. And when there's a situation like the photo on the left, which is actually very close to a trail, a park here in town, that's something that would qualify as an attractive nuisance where a passerby would see that and go to investigate to see what's going on, potentially exposing themselves to some potential risks there. So we'll talk about occupied sites on the next slide.
Right. And just to, again, reiterate the terminology there, occupied versus, or vacant versus abandoned, that term is critical when we're trying to really pinpoint any activity that we're doing. Uh, vacant versus unoccupied is of significance.
So for occupied sites, um, the phrase that we're using to document our visits to these locations is a technical inspection phrase in our software system, but it is a good descriptor of what happens. We call it a partial abatement. Uh, and the purpose of these visits, especially currently in light of COVID restrictions, in light of limited shelter space, in light of a limited response, the primary point of those visits is voluntary cleanup where our crew works with occupants to try and mitigate those impacts. Uh, so similar to what we talked about at the beginning where the overall purpose is mitigating some of these impacts at these locations. With an occupied site, our intent is to address health and safety issues, pick up litter and debris around occupied sites while we're working with occupants and communicating with people. The line in the quotation there is actually a direct documented quote from one of these partial abatement inspections that our crew does, where we're telling the story of the visit, where, you know, we're visiting an occupied camp. There's litter and debris, there's some shopping carts. And we work with the occupant, and we communicate to discuss what items the occupant wants to stay and which items they're okay with discarding. So this is the typical documentation that we would include in that type of response. And I just wanted to point out really quickly, uh, as far as the volume and the frequency of these types of visits, there are 25 or so active camping reports in our system right now where we've documented partial abatements. And so these are visits where the crew, whether they're in the neighborhoods with the pod or some other location where there's a site, where there's been a visit, and we've documented this partial abatement where, you know, voluntary cleanup has happened. We've worked with those occupants that are present. We've provided garbage bags and removed items that they've wanted us to remove. So again, there's typically around 25 of those locations lately that we're visiting as often as possible to try and mitigate those impacts.
So a point of clarification as well would be the shelter capacities during... So a point of clarification as well would be the shelter capacities during these cleanup visits. That is something that the cleanup visits are still, you know, a necessity, even when there is no law enforcement, enforcement effort there. So, so we're working with occupants there to maintain that minimum level of health and safety, provide additional resources so they can care for the site even when we're not present. But the health and safety cleanups are something that are, that are ongoing, trying to maintain that minimum level of safety.
And, and one other additional note real quick, this is why, this is why it's important for, at least in our cases, code enforcement to be specific with our documentation, because we have, you know, one crew essentially and one group of, I believe, three trucks, is that correct, Luis? Not, not many trucks, that one crew uses all day long, every day for a variety of tasks related to litter across the city. So those trucks are used for abandoned sites, they're used for partial voluntary cleanup, partial abatements and voluntary cleanups. More importantly, they're also used for private property abatements that might be coordinated with a property owner for a specific private property issue, whether or not that's related to a camping issue. These could also be, and they are often filled with debris from illegal dumps across the city. So we have a lot of different potential violations that this crew is visiting to try and mitigate. And that's why these specific types of responses on the code enforcement side, it's so important for us to differentiate them. That's why they're differentiated in the cleanup policy as well that we, that we worked with on, for quite a long time with our legal staff. Next, we'll talk about storage. And this is a, it started as a pilot program back in the summer. It came out of our process discussions with legal as well, and they, they assisted us in developing this pilot program. It started in, I believe, June, possibly July, where we started to store items from locations. And it's a program that remains ongoing. It's, it's not a, it wasn't like a one-month pilot that was then stopped. It's something that we're continuously doing. We have additional policy documents, you know, separate from the cleanup policy that further clarify what we're trying to accomplish with the storage program. Briefly, these are some of the items that we're, that we're tasked with storing when there's items left at a site that we're responding to. Those, those items might be legal documents or identification cards, intact medical equipment, backpacks, other personal bags, suitcases, clothing, bedding, tents, intact bicycles, you know, in addition to bicycles, that might include, we see a lot of strollers, different types of wheeled implements to transport items. It's not an all-inclusive list. The intent of this program is to re, to provide another option, to relocate these items to a storage facility where they're held and where it's available for those items to be returned. Looking into this process a little bit more on the next slide, but the notice that you see on the right is the notice that we leave at the site if something has been stored from that site. And then next is, these are some items that would not be considered eligible for storage. And again, this is in the context of a response to a camp. And typically, at the time when we're dealing with the decisions of, is something eligible for storage or not, at that time, nobody is present. A lot of times, it's what we would consider a vacant camp, or it's still an active camp, but the person is just not there. So the items that are not eligible for storage, and again, these come from the same document that I referenced earlier, the supplemental policy document that is specific to storage. These items are explicitly listed on that document as things that we would not store. Scrap materials, pallets, tires, lumber, tarp, soil, bedding and clothing. That would include soiled tents, any sort of cloth material that could spread mold, that could spread bedbugs, all sorts of different things, if we were to store it with other items in that same container, which could then potentially impact other stored items there. Couches, couches, mattresses, components of holes. So like, we would, we would potentially store a complete bicycle, a complete stroller, but if there were broken strollers or parts of bicycles, those types of, those types of components would not be eligible for storage. And then finally, broken or unsanitary items.
And really, this is also taking into consideration staff safety, that we can safely sort and isolate that, that item. So, so that's something that we'd also have to keep in mind, that, that we have staff trying to handle these products.
Yeah, and the, and the photo on the right is a good example of some soiled bedding, some scrap materials. There was cardboard, there was a sign, a sign that was being used as a part of the structure. But by the time we're involved at this location, there's nobody present, there's no belongings. It's really just these scrap materials and soiled items that had been exposed to the weather for an extended period of time that are left.
And that's rather typical.
And so finally, some, some additional information on storage. This is more on the process that we take once we find items that are eligible for storage. Again, this was a, this was a process that was discussed in detail leading up to the pilot. The first, the first step of the process really is to inventory that site. And again, as I mentioned, once we're at this stage, the people are no longer present. There's just, there's just a location with some items that need to be addressed. And part of this policy describes how we're going to address that as code enforcement staff. And this, the storage process, it, it could happen as a part of an enforcement effort, but not necessarily. It could happen without SPD. This is, this is just a part of the process that's in the code enforcement realm, not necessarily tied to any enforcement, any citations or any of those types of things. This would, this would be appropriate, whatever the situation is as far as camp, sit-in, potentially pedestrian interference. Those things wouldn't determine whether or not the storage protocol is followed. Just the existence of items that would qualify for storage would determine if we would follow this. And so the first step would be to inventory what's there. We would, as safely as possible, and if we can safely go through a site, do our best to inventory the items that are there. And we're using that policy document of items that are commonly encountered at these locations as our guide and as our, as our support. So we're going to do as much as we can to inventory everything that's present and place it into bins or some other method of transport. Some, some items are too large, obviously, to fit in a plastic bin, such as a bike. So in that case, we would just have the bike separate. But we place these items in the bin, once they're inventoried, once we find out what is eligible for storage and what's not. From there, we transport it to our storage facility, which is on city-owned property. It's in a secure location, and then the unit itself is secured. And we inventory, we inventory those items. And you can kind of see that inventory form, where we do our best to say what items are in those bins. But we tie it to a specific case number, a report about a camp, a camp report. And we would, you know, document what was salvaged. And our photos in the camp would document items that weren't stored, as well as notes. So we have the storage component documented, we also have what wasn't stored documented. And then finally, I mentioned this earlier with the, with the photo, we have a notice that we leave at the site if something has been stored from that location. That notice includes on it the report number, the general location that we were present at, and the date that it occurred. It's going to also include information about retrieval of those items. And it also has information about, there's not, retrieving these items is a trap. We're not going to, there's no risk of a citation being written based on retrieving these items. It's a completely separate process from any potential enforcement. This is just a way to retrieve your items that were inventoried and stored from a site. And based on that notice that was left at the site, an occupant from that location, if they see that notice and if they say, hey, I had a tent here, I had a bicycle here, and I had a backpack here, they would contact 311 to try and get those items back. We're going to store those items for at least 60 days. And then code enforcement staff is going to do our, do our part to coordinate that return. Typically, this would happen probably at City Hall, just because of the central location. There's a community court that happens there, there's outreach providers that are present that might know some of these people. And then finally, there's also, in addition to that storage notice that we would leave at the site, if we're familiar with that occupant or if there's other people present, we're also going to like, talk to those people about the storage program. I might give them a business card and say, if this person asks about what was here, give them my card, have them give me a call. And then finally, all of those policies, policy documents and examples of our notices are available on the city website. They've been there for, for months. The policy document for cleanup and then also the storage-specific documents are available on the code enforcement webpage of the city website.
And that was, this question was part of the inquiry from, from city council. So I want to make sure that that was noted, that it was addressed during the presentation.
And that's the end of the slideshow. I will stop sharing my screen and we will be available for questions.
Yep, questions? Councilmember Stratton?
And this doesn't have to be exact, but do we have any kind of a number of people or percentage that comes, that come in and pick up their stuff? We have so many, you know, of those notes posted, how many of those, out of how many of those, are there people that actually come in and pick up their stuff?
So I'll answer that question in two ways. First, some context, the storage program, with the, with the impacts to the program, with limited enforcement ability and also with losing the crew for an extended period of time, there were months where the storage program wasn't utilized, just because there wasn't a consistent response, which is similar to what Carly Courteney and I discussed, I believe, a month ago. We just talked about the impacts that the programs dealt with and how we're trying to, you know, respond in the limited manners that we can. We haven't had anybody respond to try and get those items returned, but we do have items stored from around a dozen sites at our facility.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
So Jason, once a site is cleaned, is that a location that they just really come back to and set up camp again?
I, I could, I could address that. So really, the, the enforcement effort, you know, and, and, you know, potential trespass or whatnot, it would not be part of the cleanup process. So once a site is cleaned, that is the, the goal of code enforcement has been satisfied at that point. You know, so the health and safety, immediate life safety issues have been relieved. So, so yeah, so we would not be, you know, monitoring or enforcing anything else beyond that.
But I'm just saying, so you clean up a site at 111 East 9th. It's like, do you find yourself going back to the same locations and it's like, like their, their home?
Yeah, my apologies, yeah. So, so yes, we do get common locations, hotspots, if you will, that, that this activity is occurring on. So, so it is a place, there are places that we frequent with some consistency.
And, and I would add to, it, it's further challenging because a lot of times, there might be three or four sites at a given location. And those occupants change, you know, it's not the same people there for the same amount of time. Sometimes even in a given location, we have specific sites that become abandoned. And so the occupancy rotates to some extent, people leave and then they come back later. And so when that happens, when a specific part of a, of a location is abandoned, we work with those other occupants that are there to confirm, like, hey, what's going on with this specific location? Is this what are using this? Is this something that needs to be discarded? So there's, there's the issue of repetitive occupancy at the same locations. And then there's also the confusing factor of multiple occupants at the same location and interchanging their presence, you know, throughout the months and days and weeks.
Councilmember Burke?
Thank you, and thanks for this presentation, because we have been receiving lots of emails. So my question is not really quite on this topic, but I do want to see if we can get an answer. Do the, do the people at Geiger, when you have those teams go out, are they, do they volunteer to do that? Or is it something that's required by Geiger, the inmates do that?
As far as that task is part of our work plan, we, we coordinate with Geiger work crew as, and, and really to, to fill gaps in, in our, in our program to, to where we don't have the resources to accomplish everything. So we do communicate a work plan down to, to Geiger work crews. So they are performing those tasks at our, at our direction and our training as well.
But what I'm wondering is, are, do the people who come from Geiger, are they saying, yeah, I want to volunteer?
Oh, yeah.
Told by Geiger to say, you have to go do this?
Yeah, no, they're, they're volunteers. Any type of, of inmate labor, if you will, for a lack of a better term, is, is a detail that they, they strive to get on to. So it's, they, they feel a little bit of, of freedom, they get to, you know, talk to people outside. So, yeah.
Yeah, I understand that. I just, you know, I have a really hard time with this because this, this is, this is slavery. This is how we continued slavery after the 13th Amendment got passed. And so I just maybe have a fuller, in-depth conversation about how we could possibly have stipends or something for folks. Because I, I just, I have a really big problem with this. I think it's a, a big moral issue. I think we should have a discussion about it. I, I'm not down on what you guys do, because I understand it's super expensive to hire people and whatnot. But I just, I think that kind of moral conversation needs to be had, city council level and, and the staff level. So maybe that's something in the future, but I just, it's good to hear that they are volunteers, they're not told to go do this. But when they have an option of sitting in a cell or going up to pick up trash, they're probably going to pick that one. So it just rubs me in a, in a negative way. So I just wanted to have that conversation.
Other, Councilmember Stratton?
Just two, two comments. Kate, I think that one of the conversations we can have alongside of that is the idea of hiring some of the individuals that we're working with out there, that are trying to find places to live and trying to get back on their feet, is a program to pay them to help do some of that maintenance. I know that that's been done in other cities, so that's something I think that we should look at. My second question is, do we have any shelters open during the day? Does anybody know that? I, I don't know about Cannon is the only one I would, is Cannon open all day?
I, I don't know the answer to that, but I will get you the information on that.
Okay, because one of the things, this morning I had a meeting with somebody from the neighborhood in SPD talking about homeless and camps and what we can do. And one of the suggestions was, if there's a daytime place for people to go, that it might cut down a little bit on what we're seeing with the camps and that kind of, so just a thought.
Councilmember Kinnear?
I wholeheartedly agree, Councilmember Stratton. And Council President and I have been asking for this, this is year three, for a day space for men. And women have Hope House, so they have a place to go. But single men have nowhere to go, and so we've been asking.
With lockers.
With lockers. With, absolutely. And so we've been asking for the space and like we're sitting in the wind, because nobody's paying attention. And it's really necessary. So I'm going to keep harping on that, as I harp on everything else that I'm passionate about. People get sick of listening and do something, so.
They should include SPD or NROs, because I think it would help them too. Absolutely.
I, I will tell you that we rescued a lot of lockers out of the downtown library during the remodel. And we have. the remodel, and we have them in storage. And we did put some into the Cannon building when we did the remodel there, and CHHS knows we have them and are looking for places that we can use those lockers for storage.
I was just going to supplement. I think the shelters that are open during the day are Cannon Street and the Way Out on West Mission. And the main one that usually is not open during the day is Truth Ministries, and that's probably one reason why there tends to be vacant beds there at night, but it's not open during the day. And without the libraries open, that's a huge gap in our system. So I just want to lean in and say, getting day shelter space should be a huge priority, and it would help our enforcement people. Because right now, if they try to move people along during the day, they're probably, potentially, I shouldn't say probably, they're potentially in violation of federal law unless we really have robust day spaces open. So that's a challenge. Other, I have a few questions, but other questions, does anyone have? All right. So apologies for being late. I was waiting to testify for the city on a legislative committee, and they let the chief of police go before me, so I was late. But I did get the last word, so I appreciated that. I had a question for you, kind of minor, but I heard you say on the sleeping bags and tents, whether or not they're soiled or not, and what's the definition of that? And I heard the fear of bedbugs, which that could be a pretty broad fear. And so I'm just wondering if you have any type of inventory of how many sleeping bags and tents you throw out as irredeemable versus how many that you keep? Or you could speak to that?
Yeah, I can have a data sheet for that, but soiled, you know, and defining what's soiled, what's safe to be able to keep and not keep, you know, there's a lot of factors that go into that. It could be, you know, the presence of rodent. It could be, you know, the divisible soiling of it. It could be, you know, the odors that come around when you're handling it type thing. So all of those would be kind of, you know, assessing the totality of that condition to determine whether it's going to be usable and/or salvageable or instorable is more importantly.
Yeah, and further, the typical situation where we encounter soiled bedding in tents, again, isn't at an active site. It's at an abandoned site, where it's clearly abandoned, the tent's wadded up in the corner, the sleeping bags are, you know, strewn about, there's clothing that's muddy and soiled. So those types of locations, those items aren't eligible for storage for numerous reasons.
Sure.
But we have stored multiple, multiple sleeping bags, multiple blankets, a lot of clothing, and multiple tents as well. So we are finding these locations where those items can be salvaged, but the vast, vast, vast majority that are being discarded are at abandoned sites, that they're soiled, they're damaged, they're unsanitary.
All right. That comforts me, thank you. I was just worried that that exception of, oh, maybe there's bedbugs could follow the practice. So another, and I think I caught, like, maybe one minute into your presentation, I might have missed this, so if I did, sorry, and you can tell me you explained it, I can get it offline. But one of the things, as people have mentioned, is we get a lot of emails, and we get photos and videos, and then we get your reports, and we get police reports, and it seems like the ships are passing in the night as to what is actually going on. And one fear that I have from listening to that is that rather than, people who are there, who there really isn't shelter space that fits their needs, certainly not day space, they're there, and then my understanding is the police often come by and say, hey, code enforcement's coming later today. And my fear is that they are afraid, and they're thinking, oh, no, something's going to happen. And so they're gone, and then when you show up, they're not there to say, no, I really am here, this isn't abandoned. And then you're like, well, no one's here, we got to clean this place up, more than just getting it out of the street or on the sidewalk, but really put stuff in a truck and take it away. And so I'm just wondering if you can speak to that somewhat, because I worry that people might all be intending to be doing the right thing, but people are either not understanding it or just afraid, and their lifesaving equipment is being taken away.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think the biggest clarification of some of that misinformation would be the definition between abandoned versus vacant. So if we see just a vacant site, there's not an effort to just go ahead and start tearing down everything. An abandoned site is different, and we did demonstrate that during the presentation of what kind of defines those two.
Okay. Councilmember Stratton?
Just a comment. When we started planning this presentation and talking with Chris about what it was going to take, I think Chris was very clear in that this involves several different departments. And that other, I think, big department involvement is SPD. And it's too bad that they're not here to kind of fill in some of those gaps. But I think that the next conversation we should have together as a group is with SPD. So there is that understanding.
Great, great point. I had a question from Facebook as to whether, when you seize property that you're going to store, does that ever go into the HMIS system in any way? Like, this location, on this date, hey, we picked up not what it was, but just that? So that someone, so outreach workers would be able to access that?
No, it currently doesn't. We document it in our internal case management system for code enforcement and permitting issues called a cella. So we have it documented internally, but it's not something that goes to HMIS. I mentioned before, we do communicate with outreach partners. And so if there is a site where we know they're engaged with a person, we'll let them know if items were stored from there, so that they can hopefully pass it on to that occupant.
Okay.
Along with making them aware of that the site was posted.
Yep. Chris?
I just, I would like Luis or Jason to speak to, just for the public who are viewing, to speak to the posting process. So we, you know, we've defined abandoned versus vacant, but also we do have a process where we post notifications for camps, so if you guys could speak to that, too, please.
Yeah, I'll let Jason do that one.
Okay. And this is, the posting part is, to be honest, it's something that isn't utilized often currently, just because of the limits to what we can do. So I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, there are really two focuses right now. There are these abandoned sites that we're trying to address, in the neighborhoods on the, excuse me, on the riverbanks, all throughout the city. That's a huge priority. And then the other priority is sites that are actively occupied, where we're doing voluntary pickup. You know, we're working with occupants, and we're removing what needs to be removed. The posting, a pre-clean-up posting would occur when the intent is to remove a camp, and that would happen at a vacant site, so not an abandoned site and not an occupied site. If it's an abandoned site, we escalate the cleanup, just because it's such a risk to the environment and to the public. With an occupied site, those occupants are given verbal notice from police officers if there's enforcement possible. So the posting really applies to a vacant site. And since the point of, you know, a partial abatement visit isn't to clear the site, the point is just to mitigate litter around the site, we're not frequently posting those right now. But in non, you know, when the program is more routine in its response, the posting is mostly specific to vacant camps, where the occupant isn't present. So we want to give them a written notice of, hey, we visited here, there needs, these items need to be packed up and need to relocate from this area. And then follow-up on that posting is when storage might be appropriate. And so the notice is very specific, not only to a specific type of occupancy and a specific response, but it's also specific to property. So the posting isn't a part of, it's not a part of the enforcement, like the citation process. It's part of the property and the cleanup process.
Great, thanks for that clarification. I just sent out to council members and staff, there's a lot of discussion on our live Facebook streaming about the need for day shelters and things like that. So I just direct you to take a look at that. Super kudos to Hannah Lee and Lisa for getting us Facebook Live streaming now, so people can really interact with us, right, in real time. So that's cool. What else? I think that might be all the questions I have for today. I agree, Karen, we really need to sync up police and code enforcement at the same time. So let's have another meeting. This is a great foundation for us. I also wanted to acknowledge, I've had some conversations with Mr. Alexander and the mayor about a more uniform centralized location for people seeking shelter, like maybe the bus, well, I won't say necessarily where, I won't steal that thunder, but some places. So the people would always know they could go to this location, and then we have transportation to get them to the open beds. Because right now, we do have a few open beds at Truth Ministries for single men every night. The rest of it is pretty much full, but that one is, there's a few beds, and that also fulfills the need for day shelter services, especially until the library. So that's all there. We're a little over time, but we have one more issue, I believe, on legislative update. Chris and Jason and Luis, thank you so much. And just know that I want to assure you that I understand you're in a very challenging place of trying to do your job and uphold our community values and policies and things like that. And we don't expect you to solve it yourself, but hope that you'll continue to be part of the conversation, because I think until we get full alignment of the entire city and really the greater community on it, we're just not going to get there. But keep up the good work, so thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yep. And Eric, are you there? Yes, I see you. Well, I see you.
I'm here, yes, Council President. So we deferred discussion on House Bill 1076. I joked with everyone on the call that since it involves Latin, that you understand and I don't, I thought you were better suited to describe the nature of this bill and why there's controversy. It was voted out of the House on a party line vote, 53 to 44. Proponents of the bill are really looking for our help in keeping the ball rolling in the Senate. I know you have some experience and knowledge about this that would be helpful to the council. So if you wouldn't mind describing the importance of this, hopefully we can get everybody to give a thumbs up, and we'll get this on our support list, so our lobbyists can go to work.
Yeah. So there's only two of us council members on the line currently, but we wanted to still honor the process of bringing, our idea on the legislative work group is, when there's issues that we think might be controversial, is bringing it forward, so that if council members have an objection to us signing on as a tier two, which our work group can do with a two-to-one vote, people have the opportunity to object. And so since this is live, and other council members can review it, and recorded, can review it, and they'll do it. I think it's still worth just mentioning, and I think it probably will be close to the heart of Councilmember Stratton, so probably will agree on it. But essentially, this bill strengthens employee rights if they find themselves in a whistleblower situation, and especially in a government. And actually, the Association of Washington Cities is very opposed to this. They fear that enforcing the rights of employees to whistleblow might cost cities money. And I suppose that's true, from my perspective, if they insist on illegally retaliating against people. But this just gives some more tools to those people who are willing to step forward, and it also allows people who aren't even the victims to bring a case forward. And because a lot of times, the victim is the person that has their job to lose, and they're afraid. So this allows, this is the key TAM aspect, that other people can bring it forward, if they know of government misconduct, they can do that. So essentially, this strengthens the rights of employees. Over the years, in Washington law, government employees have been given, I would say, a reduction in whistleblower rights. Like, it sounds good on paper, but in practicality, the courts have been a little more sympathetic with government and trying to keep their employees in line. It's just my personal opinion on it. So this strengthens that. So a support for this would strengthen employees. So that's my short description. Thank you, Councilmember Stratton. So I'll ask, are there any council members opposed? Not today, but we'll give them a chance.
You asked it. You just asked it.
Could be easier.
Yep, but we will give people some time. I think we meet again at 1:00 tomorrow, so if anyone cares about that, and if you're watching, let us know as well. So you can go to our city council member webpage, and there's a link that you can email us all, if you think this is a good or a bad idea. I don't think there's anything else on the agenda. I appreciate everyone's time. I missed some really important presentations, and I hopefully will catch up on the recorded version. Thanks, everyone. Have a great day and weekend, and we'll see you Monday at 1:15 for finance. Take care.